She says it on the bottom of the package and on the bottom of the vapor, do not throw this in the trash. They catch fire, they get hot. If there's wiring, if they catch a proton, they will get hot. And I think that by introducing, if I had a class of peers that would support me, it's something I could do. I don't have that. And I often advocate for the public's defense. And I think this would cause a warrant, some sort of warrant from others to say, well, they're violating it. It says it on the package. It says it right there. Do not throw it in the trash. They're throwing it in the trash. And I think this would help my class if we could manage this, including Batteries Plus. I did contact Batteries Plus. They said that they were willing to speak with me and the city on creating some sort of recycling effort for that. I don't know what to do. So I'm asking, what more should I do with this?
Who would be a good person for him? Recycling.
We've done some recycling with those batteries through the solid waste district and stuff. And we've even had receptacles out here at City Hall at different times. So they've been working on that at solid waste.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I want to make sure that they don't hit the landfill like this. And then the second is that the bottles recycling for plastics. I'm a really big fan of the idea that each bottle is worth 10 cents and that one semi trailer, 153 foot semi trailer of Gaylors could bring in that profit somewhere of a million dollars just by the state of Oregon, have an agreement with the recycling industry. So that's something else if anyone would like to speak with me about. I'm really interested in moving forward with that idea.
Thank you for your comment. Any other questions from council or public on this ordinance? Seeing none, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-06? Linker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Wiese?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero. Okay, next ordinance is for first reading, ordinance 2025-02. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to Tippecanoe County, Indiana. And this has been tabled from January the 6th meeting. Okay, Mrs. Als.
I move for ordinance, excuse me, I move to hear and approve ordinance 2025-02.
Second.
I was looking it up on the agenda since I didn't bring my paper copy.
Okay.
All right. So this ordinance is on the establishment of allowing accessory dwelling units within the city of West Lafayette. If you've seen the news, unfortunately, West Lafayette City Council doesn't meet until 6:30 this evening, but it is indicated that they will not vote to approve accessory dwelling units in West Lafayette. So we have consulted with both the mayor and city attorney over there. And it would be the recommendation that we vote this down tonight.
Any questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments from the public?
Hello, my name is Tyler Beach, B-E-A-C-H, 625 North 12th Street. What is the term accessory dwelling is my question?
Tyler, it's on the paperwork that it's, if you want the best definition of it, if you go and look at the agenda item for tonight, it's spelled out in the ordinances as they are put up on the website.
Okay, I couldn't stand opposed, but I don't have the time. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or concerns from the public? Will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-02? Linker?
No.
Snyder?
Nay.
Wies?
Nay.
Brown?
Nope.
Ellersmeyer?
No.
Williamson?
No.
Downing?
No.
Ordinance fails. Zero seven. Okay, the next ordinance is 2025-07.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to Tippecanoe County, Indiana, Uzone number 115.
Okay.
I move to hear ordinance 2025-07.
Okay, Mr. Linker.
Second.
All right. Well, unlike in West Lafayette, Tippecanoe County commissioners were interested in establishing accessory dwelling units for the unincorporated portions of the county. So what you have in front of you today is an ordinance that would allow accessory dwelling units by right in ag and rural estate zones within the unincorporated portions of Tippecanoe County. I believe this did pass the commissioners at their meeting this morning.
So you're recommending approval of this one?
That the staff recommended approval and the commissioners are still on board with it.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council concerning this ordinance? Any questions from the public concerning this ordinance? Seeing none, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-07? Linker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero. Okay, next is ordinance 2025-08.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to Tippecanoe County, Indiana, Uzone number 116.
Mr. Snyder?
Madam President, I move to hear ordinance 2025-08.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Currently in our zoning ordinance, we have two definitions related to gas service stations. The first one is a gasoline service station which sells primarily to consumers. And then there is also a definition for a truck stop which sells primarily to commercial vehicles, has overnight parking, other accessory uses at the truck stop. There's a new kind of hybrid of gas station that has started to show up here in Tippecanoe County. The best real life example I can tell you about is the Speedway on State Road 43 near the state police post. In the front, they have consumer vehicle gas pumps. And in the back, they have four long lane semi truck gas pumps. No overnight parking or anything like that. So that is what the APC is now creating a new definition for called a fuel center. So it's meant to catch these gas service stations that aren't quite the traditional consumer method and aren't a truck stop as well. And so right now APC has been pushing anyone that has this hybrid model into a truck stop definition because that's the closer one. And that doesn't really work for it. So they've created this new definition for a fueling station, which they can have no more than four lanes for semi truck fueling and four parking spaces for semis. But again, no overnight services or other accessories. Fueling centers will be permitted by right in highway business and general business zones.
Any questions from the council concerning this ordinance?
That doesn't take into consideration whether it's got a restaurant or anything like that?
No, no.
That would be the only question I would have because only have four parking spaces. I mean, if more than five guys want to sit down and have lunch?
Well, they're gonna have to find a truck stop.
Any other questions from the council about this ordinance? Any questions from the public about this ordinance?
Hi, I'm a pedestrian. My name is Tyler Beach. Do I have to do this every time? Introduce myself? Okay, hi, my name is Tyler Beach, 625 North 12th Street. I am a pedestrian. I travel lightly. And when I have traveled, there are the incidences that I've seen mobile, what appear to be mobile meth labs. So I just want to bring to the attention, especially with being where I am from, the substance use disorders in these areas would give them the opportunity not only to implement the fuel stations, but if we're adding more, would it be some way for them to elude the provisions we would have to monitor the mobile meth labs? This is the one that I'm speaking of specifically. It was a really rough one. And it's just, I don't really know how to speak to this term. I've never spoken with anyone of this term before. But what it was is that, and I want to bring that to the attention of the one time that I did travel, or the two times that I did travel, seeing that sitting there parked in one of the fuel stations, refueling centers for, you know, 20 minutes, it just sat there. You know, the guy's looking at me, I'm looking at him, I'm looking back there. And then the one that was ordering to do it pulled in a really nice luxury car. I could tell that they were having their meeting and discussion. And some way I find myself in the middle of it. And I don't, you know, I don't want that for everybody. And I think we should keep our eyes and ears open for that stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment from the public on this ordinance?
Would the Love's Gas Station, I know it'd be grandfathered because it was done before this anyway, but would it pass this?
The Love's Gas Station, that was a true truck stop, an I-3. That's required in industrial zoning.
That's not a supplement. Gotcha. All right.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, the clerk will call vote on ordinance 2025-08. Linker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero. Okay, next ordinance, ordinance 2025-09.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Tippecanoe County, Indiana, to rezon certain real estate from HB and R1 to GB.
Okay, where are we on our?
I can do it?
Carrie.
Madam President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2025-09 on first reading.
Second.
Okay. Do we have somebody from TSC?
Is it my turn?
It is your turn.
Sure. I'm Mark D. Young. I'm a lawyer at Stewart &amp; Brannigan, 300 Main Street. I've represented TSC for many years. Some of you remember me from the old days. We have gone, we are very pleased to be here. We've worked with some of the city staff and we've been encouraged in our purchase of the Hack Farm. It's owned by John Hack in part and by John and his siblings from around the country in the other part. It's located down on what I call State Road 25 near 231. It's now 52 and Teal Road, Old Romney and Elston Road. It's about, I forget, 35 acres or so. It's been farmed for years. It's zoned currently highway business and R1. And we're asking for a rezoning to GB with a commitment from us not to do a list of items that the city suggested we not do there. So I'm just here to watch and answer any questions if you have them. And that's all I've got. I request your approval of this rezoning so we can move on to the next project for TSC. Thank you.
Question from the council on this rezoning? Questions from the council? Any questions from the public on this rezoning?
Is that typical for corporations to zone GB, school corporations?
Mark, can you answer it?
I'd be happy to field that question.
Thank you.
HB zone doesn't permit schools. The GB zone does. Sometimes in the county, we have gone to R1. It does too. So it's more common for us to zone to an R1 zone.
That's why I thought.
But it's not the only zone that accommodates schools. And GB allows much more flexibility for the future use of that property. We don't currently have a building plan. We hope to build a school someday, but it may not be a school someday. That's one reason. The other reason is even if we put in a school, the GB zone allows a large array of other community service type services, daycares, police departments, family services, that would not be allowed in an R1 zone. So we have worked with some of the city folks and the plan commission. They've both seen fit to recommend the GB zone for this particular property.
So is it the corporation's intention to hold on to the property?
Yeah. Well, it is their intention to hold on to the property. The future is unknown. I'm not here, anything you say as a school corporation sounds like a promise as soon as you say it. So I'm very careful. But we don't buy property to sell it. We buy property to build schools on. We've been building schools for decades. The TSC is growing. The population on the south end is growing. So we think we will want to put a school here someday.
But it would make it more marketable if you were to choose a different site and...
That's right. It's certainly in an area that general business could be used by a commercial user if the school were to change its plans and put this on the market. Again, we've sold property once in my 35 years there. I don't know if we would do it a second time, but I can't, I can't promise that. And it doesn't, it doesn't permit apartments of any kind, which is also, you know, popping up around that neighborhood and something we're hoping to...
My concern was a wide array of businesses that don't necessarily fit in residential in, under GB.
Yes.
Because it's surrounded by residential. That was my concern.
Yeah, it's a legitimate question. And my direct answer is yes, we want to go to GB because of the wide array of uses. They are not all commercial uses though.
Right.
That wide array. And if you look at the map, there's a lot around it besides just residential.
But if you were to relinquish the property or sell it or whatever, it's zone GB. And now we've got...
A possible commercial user.
A possible, yeah.
With, but not that nice list that we put together.
That list would go with the...
That's right. That commitment that we don't do any of those things listed would be permanent.
Yep.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council or the public on this ordinance? Hearing none, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-09? Linker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Wies?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Ellersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, next is ordinance 2025-10.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to Tippecanoe County, Indiana, to rezon certain real estate from R2 to R1T.
I move here and approve ordinance 2025-10.
Second.
Okay. And you're also speaking to this one?
As I mentioned a moment ago, I'm a partner at the firm of Stewart &amp; Brannigan. So is Jim Oles. Many of you know Jim. He and I both graduated from Jefferson High School, but he more recently than I. And he helped me out at the plan commission. We had, each had clients with something in the rezoning process this month. So he took care of the plan commission meeting and I offered to be here tonight. I'm representing RSK. That's Ryan Kennedy, who has a purchase agreement on a property near the golf course. I saw some of you looking at the map of it. So I won't talk too long about that unless you have questions. They want to take it to a new zone, R1T, which will allow townhouse development. The plan commission voted unanimously for it. The staff report recommends it. The staff report from the plan commission also references that there will be a subdivision process that is required to go through this before they get permits for this thing. So I'm here again just to help listen to your discussion and answer any questions if I can. Thank you.
Like we said before, we talked a little bit before the meeting, there are three options. And one of the options has garages and the other two don't. Okay?
Yes.
And their preference would be?
I'm gonna try not to make promises. Here's what I've been told. They want to have some parking. One of them has garages. I think one of them has some non-garaged parking coming in. It's the side load, the number three option. So they've presented, the developer has presented to the plan commission staff and you, these three options, which one it lands on, we don't know yet. It's going to be a feasibility thing. And it's going to go through some more ordinance compliance analysis before we're done. For example, one of them also shows the need for a setback variance. In order to make room for parking, we might need to build the building closer to the line, even in a new, even in a new zone. The main point here is they haven't landed on an exact plan. They've got three and they're willing to be creative. And so is the plan commission staff so far. So we're hopeful that we will have a four unit, single family option that we can sell. We all know we would rather have a garage than not. And so if there's a way to get that on there, we'll get that on there. That's what I was told. Ryan is at West Lafayette tonight for a different reason. I'll do my best to answer any other questions.
Will that be into the final determination, the final plan?
There will be an opportunity in the subdivisions process to be more specific. I think the staff report also shows that this zone doesn't require any parking. So, I mean onsite parking. So I'm not sure how that's going to land. And I don't think either the plan commission or the developer are sure right now where it will land. But yes, there will be another opportunity at the plan commission to approve a subdivision before they get permits.
So would the other options be plan development or R3 or R2? Or is that the, when you're making the choice of the zoning?
Well, this is the zoning choice. So I doubt they come back with an R, I mean, they could, but they normally just pick the zoning first because that is the baseline. And then...
We prefer they stay owner occupied.
That's right.
Yes.
They plan to stay owner occupied, I believe.
And that's what, okay.
And that's why R1T is desired.
This is the new zone that was created for this.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you, Tony.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Questions from the council? Questions or concerns from the public?
Good evening. My name is Steve Fee and I live at 1320 South West Street, which is about three doors south of the property that we're talking about here. And I was also at the APC meeting and I voted, or not voted, but I was in favor of this project. But I was in favor with a concern. And my concern is parking, kind of what you're alluding to here now. I've lived in that neighborhood since the late 50s. I'm very familiar with the property and the houses around there. Not only do I live there, but I also own a property just to the south of this property and just to the west of it. We have a combination of single family homes and duplexes in that area. And there's some parking concerns today. And even sometimes we have an overflow of parking that comes from Fourth Street because of the bicycle lanes on Fourth Street. They can't park on Fourth Street at all. So sometimes we have parking over there. I've talked with Mr. Kennedy on two occasions, very cordial talking, and he knows of my concern also. But I would just like to say that the Cherokee Street address, which is what this property is, but the prints that I saw have a Fifth Street entrance. And again, just like the gentleman said, one option was some parking off the little alleyway to the south. And I think it showed three to four spots. One showed garages underneath each of the four units. And one showed zero parking at all. My concern is congestion. One to two cars per unit, that's an additional eight cars. Those cars are going to be parking on Fifth Street. They're not going to park on Cherokee. Cherokee is about five feet narrower than Fifth Street. It's a through fare between Ninth and Fourth. It's very busy. Those people that own those units are going to park on Fifth Street. And again, I'm in favor of it. It's a great enhancement to our neighborhood. But I do have concerns on the parking. And I ask you as a council to take this into consideration. And I'm here by myself, but I can tell you the others in our little block there have the same concern and in favor, but concerned. So would you please take that into consideration? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I'd ask, is there anything that we can put in, amended commitment or anything to make that in the R1T? There's...
No, because the zoning code doesn't address part, there's no parking related to that. So again, as he indicated, it's got to go through the subdivision process and they haven't sold, aren't sold on an idea yet.
Yeah. Mr. Kennedy usually does very nice properties. And it looks like that would be prime for that kind of product. So parking would be nice if you could share with them.
Yes, this is a well-known issue. We're working hard on it.
Very good. Very good.
Tyler Beach, 625 North 12th Street, Lafayette, Indiana, 47904. You know, some quote, parking, it's simple, it's state, and I noticed that a lot of people do fail this. And so that means future, later on down the way, someone will be failing the parking. So I think that proactively putting parking in so that it doesn't fail in the future would be smart. Hurricane structures, just something that's stable, doesn't have to be a, a, a structure that's built, it's insulated, just a simple housing unit for the vehicle, something that could even be collapsible. So that if someone who doesn't live there doesn't want to park there, they could collapse the structure, and they can use it for a patio of some sort. Now, cars do come with warranties, warranties, and mortgage is a Latin term for war, and then so is warranty. And I think that it is that you follow the warranty set with the cars. It says you must store these in enclosed, you know, spaces. You must keep them inside, keep them indoors, store them in some sort of cover. Again, that's the second part to protect against warrant. And I would also like to acknowledge, as we all have here tonight, the term mortgage, and that it is the agreement that we would have to lay these conflicts to rest. And I agree with the parking. I'm not sure what the housing, the zoning, sounds like an R3, and that just came to me. I'm not quite sure. However, the, the ability to erect something that you would be able to collapse, it would be hurricane sturdy, and I think that is a good idea.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments?
President, I have, I guess I have a misunderstanding or something here. If we pass this tonight, and what is the mechanism that is going to secure the residents of that neighborhood, that this is not going to be a disaster for them? Having eight, eight vehicles. I know, I have complaints in my particular district with single-family houses, so I can imagine what it would be for four-town houses. I know we need the housing, but I have a little bit of a concern about this being kind of an open-ended thing, that once we pass this tonight, we're not going to see this again, correct?
No, through the city council, you will not, but it will still need the subdivision process. And then again, depending on what they ultimately come on the floor plan, there might be variances or other things that will have to come to the Board of Zoning Appeals as well, but there wouldn't be anything that would come back to council. So I, I hear your question. I don't, I don't necessarily have an answer for it, so...
I would think that what we, what we have to look at is probably the, the, the best intentions of the, of the people who are going to build this thing. That's the reason why they gave us three options, and, and the one with, with the garage. And since the gentleman who spoke to us told us that he's talked to these people, and they have been sympathetic to what he said, I'm pretty sure that they're, they're going to, they're probably going to land on the one with the garages, you know, to make, to make sure that, that this development does not cause a parking problem.
Right.
Now, getting in and out of parking places, that may be, getting in and out of them, that may be something else, but I think they're going to put garages in.
So constituents, I would think, that are in support of this, would like us to approve it, but then have their voices heard at APC?
Yeah.
When it goes through the subdivision process?
Yeah.
Would that be the best route for them to take? Because they're in favor of the project, but they want the parking, so...
Yeah.
Does that, does that work for you, Mr. Fee?
I think that would help.
Okay.
Yeah.
We don't want to leave you hanging.
I guess that the biggest concern is that there's three options. And like the attorney said, one of the options is no parking, which means street parking. And as, I'm not a developer by any means at all, and I know that he said that he was going to sell, he was trying to keep the price under $300,000 for each of these four units. Our little neighborhood, the houses sell for 125 to 200 maybe, so, so that's why it's enhancement force. But it's a pretty established neighborhood. Like I said, I've lived there since 1958 when I was a child, and I still live there. So I was the paper boy, I was the UPS driver, I was, so I mowed the yards and I filed the snow. So I know the neighborhood. I'm just concerned, and I won't always own the property that I own, but I'm trying to look forward to the other people that will own them someday. And I think with an open-ended three-plan or three-tier, whatever you want to call it, I think that opens the door that they could build it without any parking. And then I think it's not going to be good for those people that live in that little block. There's five houses on one side of the street, there's four houses on one side of the street. Now it would be basically eight, counting the four, so you're putting four units on one small lot. So again, in favor of it, I'm just asking for some parking to...
But we're just voting on the zoning.
Yeah, that's correct.
So we're not, we're not voting on the plan.
Yeah, that's what's disturbing, I guess, to me, so, thank you.
But sir, I think you should, you should be, you should be assured that nobody's going to buy a house for $300,000 if they got to park on a street.
I would agree with you. And I think you're right. I, I just want to know you're right.
And I would hope the Board of Zoning Appeals would be more likely to vote for the variance if it would include the parking structure, they would allow them to...
Sure.
If it took a foot or two feet or...
Thank you again.
Thank you.
The other concern is that it's a corner, and I think that makes it even more difficult than, because you're coming off into two, two different streets there.
Has your client met with the neighbors in this area?
I do not know. I, I do know that he's spoken to Mr. Fee, and I appreciate him, and I wanted to just make sure you heard what he said. He does support the plan.
If, they're hurting.
He said it again, and I appreciate him. This process, you know, this step here, step there, step everywhere thing is probably in lots of developments.
Right.
That, Mr. Brown nailed it, in my opinion. I don't need to repeat everything you said, but you've got a, a developer that does quality work and wants to have a quality product, you know? And then you do have a permitting step, which doesn't involve the council, but it does involve the city staff. Once the rules are set, you know, we're going to have to come down here and get a permit to satisfy those rules. The zoning ordinance subdivision, or a variance, does also open the door to conditions or, you know, requirements. If they have, if they end up really going with one of the plans where they're squeezing some parking on and need a, need a setback variance, then they're going to have to put the parking on by Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm predicting, I'm not, you know, there's a process. We can have to do it one step at a time.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
I would just say, as a council, as a member of the council, I think it would be great if we would express our concerns to the county and to the commissioners, that we would strongly urge them to make sure there's parking with this. I know we don't have any...
Right, and it doesn't, it won't go to the commissioners. There's nothing that would go to the commissioners.
The, the...
Sorting.
Board of Zoning.
I'm sorry.
Yep, no, just want to make sure you...
Yeah, yeah, the zoning. I, I don't know if we can send them some kind of a letter or something to say, you know, we, we strongly are in favor of the neighborhood not, not getting into a problem here.
You can easily share your thoughts with the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay.
Letter, oral testimony, there are all kinds of ways for you to share your thoughts and concerns.
I would, I would like to propose that the council have the clerk send that to the zoning appeals, if we could.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns about this ordinance? Seeing none, will clerk conduct, conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-10?
Linker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Wees?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alwesmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Okay, ordinance 2025-11.
An ordinance amended the Lafayette downtown designated outdoor refreshment area.
Okay, Ms. Linker?
Madam President, and I move we here ordinance 2025-11.
Second.
Second. I'm per se.
Second.
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Jackie and I will tag team a little bit on this one. As most of you probably aware of the background, we started with one of these areas last year, and it's really just a block, and we told everybody when we were doing that that we wanted to start small and make sure we could work out the bugs and anything that might come. There was a few of them, the signage and everything to figure out, so I think that was a good step to take. But obviously, very, very quickly after we even started that, we got lots of calls from people that wanted to be able to be involved with this, and so we certainly took that to heart, and we're trying to move at a reasonable speed. We felt that still important to be prudent, right? Think through well what we're, what we're doing. And I think we've done that, and we've come up with a map that all of you should have there of where we want to expand the DORA into, into downtown through downtown. And there's a list of businesses that have already contacted us and want to be in this first group to get approval, and with all their paperwork and everything. And so we would appreciate the council's approval on this, to take that next step, to extend this. We think it will be good for downtown. Downtown is certainly a vibrant, dynamic place and continues to grow, and I think this is a, a method to do that. As you will see, it does go around the courthouse. I did speak with Commissioner Murtal, and he is fine with that. We all, and, and we have the ability that if something doesn't go the way that we want it to, or we want to change these boundaries, we certainly have the capacity to do that. We have the capacity to enact, to also not do it during certain events if we don't feel that's appropriate. So I feel like we've got the things in place that are needed to make this successful and allow these additional downtown businesses to participate, and others that may want to as, as the word gets out. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if Jackie, you feel there's anything technical that needs to be added to the presentation?
Nope, you got it all.
Okay.
So all these businesses would have the option of a parklet or a DORA? Oh, this last step, right?
No, they're not related.
This has nothing to do with parklets, nothing to do with...
Right, parklets can still be set up in April for any of the businesses that have it, but it is a completely separate...
And there is a process, there's a process for that, too.
But some, one doesn't restrict the other or anything.
No, one does not restrict the other.
No, it does not. And, and again, if your business does not want to participate, just because you're in the area, you don't have to, and you, you get a special sign saying that you do not participate in the, in the DORA. So nobody is also not being forced to be a part of this, is strictly voluntary for those that want to participate.
Yeah, and, and to expand on that, we did, the Economic Development Department, Miles is here, he helped conduct those meetings, did have meetings with the downtown business owners and, and other things. And actually, Miles and Kara went up Main Street and went and visited businesses they hadn't been able to get in contact with. And there are some businesses that do not want to participate in the DORA, and as the mayor indicated, that is correct. You will get a little sign that says DORA is not here, and they can have the ability to do that. And then all the businesses that you do see listed in the ordinance are the ones that have already submitted their applications to us. But if there's a business in the DORA area that's not listed, doesn't mean they can't be part of it, they'll just have to come later and submit the application.
You really didn't have any major problems with our experiment at the...
No, it was a pretty small experiment, but...
That was going to be my question, because we had, we had had some back and forth about whether or not there was going to be a burden for law enforcement, what was going, what was going to be going on in terms of that. I guess that worked out okay?
Yeah, no, we're, we're very comfortable with all that. So, and again, we have lots of flexibility if things don't go the way that we need to to pull back, and, and we will, if we need to.
So as a former teacher, our residents are reading and following directions?
So far, we'll see.
That's good, good news.
Everything, life is an experiment.
Now Chief Gallois got some...
There you go.
Just, just an aside question. We had that wagon or something that was here, is it gone?
The bicycle thing?
It was here last summer for a while. I don't know if it'll come back out this summer for sure or not.
I didn't know what happened to that.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't see it out a lot myself. It was out some, but I didn't see it out a lot. I'm not getting on it unless it pedals for you, so... So, we'll just, I mean, again, that's a private business. We go through a process, and you just have to, we just have to see if it'll come back or not.
Has nothing to do with this.
No, I don't get too worked up over it. It's to see what comes, and we'll deal with it as it comes.
Any questions from the public concerning this ordinance?
Go ahead.
Right. Now, my name is Tyler Beach, and it's 625 North 12th Street, Lafayette, Indiana, 47904. With the concessions and the events that we're dealing with in Lafayette, and it being a 200-year anniversary, is what I was just told, we are using technology, practicing artificial intelligence. Everywhere I go, I'm always tempted by some form of what I have called invasion of privacy, or something that attempts me to call to my attention, that I do acknowledge them. It was reported to stimuli is how they termed it in mental health court. Oh, it's stimuli, and he doesn't respond to the stimuli. Some people call it subcontext, subtopical, but there's always the attention, my being drawn to this majority who are acting with malice, these devices that are being used, also licensed terms malice. I've gone to council representative, I've gone to Senator, mental health court, I've called homicide, I've asked for them to reach, move the terms and agreements to malice.
Tyler, you're supposed to be addressing the ordinance.
Addressing the ordinance.
Well, with the refreshments, and we're calling to this, and the people are always feuding in some sort of subtopic conversation, and then you brought up, which really draw my attention, is the bicycle pedaling thing, where they're drinking on the wagon, and they're pedaling their bike, and they're going down the street. Last time I saw that, they were all hailing me as they were driving, and they got off, and they were talking, and, and it's something that is anonymous and deceptive, which is the malice that it says in the terms and agreements on the phones. I think we should really address these trusts that we license to act with malice before we address any concessions or any sort of activities, because it calls for a precise sort of national security threat. I know that, that I deal with it every day, and I think that's something we should deal with when we do our concessions and such.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this ordinance? Seeing none, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-11?
Linker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Wees?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alwesmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Okay, we have two resolutions. The first one is Resolution 2025-04.
A resolution requesting the area Plan Commission study the expansion of the courthouse proximate and the upper Main Street area.
Okay, where?
I move for approval of Resolution 2025-04.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Second.
Okay.
Good evening. Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director for the city of Lafayette. This resolution is authorizing the area Plan Commission to study the possible expansion of the courthouse proximate district. This is an overlay district in the central business district zone that prohibits residential use on the first floor of buildings. So historically in downtown, when you see buildings and such, the first floor activity use is commercial or office, retail, that, and then the upper floors are residential or other uses. So we've had this enacted, enacted for several years, but now we'd like to see it expanded because we've had new developments downtown, and we're seeing this kind of activity in, in the downtown with some mixed-use developments, and want to preserve that first floor activity So we've had this enacted for several years, but now we'd like to see it expanded because we've had new developments downtown, and we're seeing this kind of activity in the downtown with some mixed-use developments, and want to preserve that first-floor activity on these buildings and such. So the idea is to study this and look at the possible expansion of it from South to Alabama Street, from Second to Sixth Street, and then South Street to mid-block, between Main and Columbia Street to Seventh Street. Again, it may be changed through the process and such, but you know, it will be studied through Area Plan Commission, and then they'll come back with a recommendation to the city council. So asking for your approval, and happy to answer any questions.
Are there very many properties that have first-floor residences in this area?
Not very many, right. That's the way, the Lar House actually does have some on the Main Street side, and those are grandfathered in.
Yes.
And then in this area, there's going to be a few places we'll probably carve out. As you see on the map there, the Reifers Apartments are carved out, because, you know, that's an apartment. It's been that way for almost 100 years, and makes sense and such. But we have projects like the Ellsworth and other projects that have come online here recently that are more traditional buildings downtown and such, and we want to maintain that first-floor commercial activity rather than residential. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council members?
What would be the expectation of when that study is done and back to you?
A couple months, it's not going to take very long. It's got to go through a process with Area Plan, with their ordinance committee and such.
Okay.
Okay, any comments from the public on this ordinance? Seeing none, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on Resolution 2025-04? Linker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Weiss?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero. Okay, next one is Resolution 2025-05. A resolution requesting the Area Plan Commission study of use and zoning of gasoline service stations within the city of Lafayette.
Madam President, I move we hear and approve Resolution 2025-05.
Second.
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, this is a resolution. Try to keep it fairly narrow. We'd like the Area Plan to look at the zoning and of gas stations and other requirements or potential requirements inside the city limits of Lafayette. I don't know about you, but I get lots of inquiries from people about the number of gas stations, gas stations slash convenience stores, and when they're located, a lot of outside storage and product stuff. And I know there are some other communities that are looking at this, some of them have already done a few things. And so I think as we continue to grow, and we continue to try to redevelop, and we look at the highest and best use of what land we have left for us to use, and I think it would be good to take a look at this issue. I have no idea where it will end up, or where it will go at this time, but we would like the Area Plan to start looking at it, what here, what other Area Plan areas might be doing, other communities, and maybe give us some thoughts or ideas that we might want to consider. Like I said, I don't know where it'll go, but I hear enough from folks and see enough that I think it's definitely worth looking into.
It's starting to jump up like weeds.
Very timely, Mr. Mayor, thank you for doing this, because I've had a couple of folks within the last couple of months say something to me about... Thank you.
Okay, well, great. Well, then I appreciate you voting yes.
Any questions, any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public on this resolution? Seeing none, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on Resolution 2025-05? Linker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Weiss?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero. Do you have any reports of standing committees? Reports of special committees? Worked by the mayor?
No, ma'am.
Okay, miscellaneous and new business? Reports of councilmen? Next is public comment. If you have public comment, you're limited to three minutes. You'll come to the podium, say your name and address, and please be respectful and courteous of everyone present. Somebody for public comment?
Tyler Beach, 625 North 12th Street, Lafayette, Indiana, 47904. I would like to know, I live in 12th Street in Elizabeth, just by Laura, who would be my district person, who would be the representative? Well, hello, we don't know this, my class, we don't know the procedures of municipal powers, municipal code, municipal government, and I would like to establish a relationship with you, Mr. Brown. There's a lot that's happening there, breaches of peace daily and nightly. And I've made my reports to the police, I'd find it easier if I were able to send them text messages with photographs so that they could open the photographs and see this. It goes along with the web-based information sharing with the fire department. I believe IT could incorporate the same technology for the 911 reporting. Mr. Brown, for all of us, the public's defense. Second, I'm dealing with mortgage fraud, I'm noticing a lot of mortgage fraud, internal espionage, or even embezzlement coming through the Lafayette Housing Authority, just fundings, federal fundings, it's okay, there is no crime in justice. There is no crime in justice, and I know those guys at the jail, they're always crying. Every time I go there, I cry, they always make me cry. I cry for them, too. There's no crying, justice, it's justice, it's just age, and I wish they would follow these ideas. Another port that I have to request is a fire extinguisher, some sort of fire extinguisher program. Maybe if I could, or we all could, speak with fire extinguisher manufacturers abroad across the nation, continent, to provide for the community through, the introduction would be anyone who's newborn babies. You know, they're having a child, a lot of them do not have fire extinguishers. I know it's only $10, but I think there's something to introduce them, even the idea. Hey, guys, have your, you know, have a good life, and here's a fire extinguisher just in case. You know, even in the vehicles, I think that where Subaru's manufacturing vehicles, they should install mobile fire extinguishers. And then, glass, how do we recycle glass? How do we dispose of glass? I know I pick up glass all the time, and I feel conflicted when I put it into the trash receptacle. I don't know if we recycle glass, do we put it into a recycling container?
You can't, you can only put certain types of glass in the recycling container because almost nobody's buying glass anymore around the globe. And so there's a very, very, very small market for glass. So the amount of, the type of glass is very limited that you can put into your recycling.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment tonight?
My name is Erin Moonwalker, and I live at 1147 Hillcrest Road in West Lafayette. Is there any more information that you need? Okay, thank you. So I'm a social worker, and I've worked at Lums, Sycamore Springs, and Valley Oaks. I'm currently working at Modern Mental Health, but, you know, our clientele is all over the greater Lafayette area. I love our community, and I've devoted my life to serving it. I've been watching events unfold at the federal level, and I don't think our community knows what we're about to experience. For example, as I drove here, I learned that the Social Security Administration was likely being dismantled, and that we could expect payment disruptions in two to three months. So my question is, what are we doing to prepare? I feel compelled to start organizing community meetings, to start these discussions. Is that something you would be willing to allocate resources for, to facilitate? Or is that something you and the mayor would be willing to spearhead? Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say bye. Cut out for Mr. Brown.
I liked it.
Yeah, this is a good one.